Hello. I was debating whether I should even stream today. But I feel like drawing, so... Still gonna go for it. Forgot to check my audio. Hopefully it's fine. Okay, yeah, it sounds fine. So distracted. I don't know, I feel like every couple weeks, or every month, ever since I started this channel, somehow, I've gotten sick. It's a little bit funny. Feel a little bit cursed. If I'm coughing too much? I'll prob- I mean, I should probably end the stream if I'm coughing too much, but... If it's too much, I'll switch to typing. But yeah, it's gonna be a quieter stream than usual. I know I'm not the loudest already. But yeah. I'm gonna do a warm-up. With Lunaria. I wanted to make uh... um... Like a picture that go on my BRB screen. That's empty right now. Nothing fancy. I'm thinking Lunaria. Making a cup of tea. Mm-hmm. That's not what my thing looks like. Nice drawing there. Thanks, Mangoes. I'm dying. Save me. It'd be funny if you weren't my friend Mangoes and you're just a rando. And I'm just like, "Please save me." Never heard or seen you in my life. Crazy talk. I'm surprised you even saw me. I didn't even tweet that I was going live. I was like, "I'm sick, no one needs to hear this right now." Then I was like, "I still feel like streaming." You just refresh your YouTube feed? Wow, YouTube actually working? That's crazy. I feel like I never get notifications. It knows. Even if I turn them on, it never works half the time. So I'm like, "What's the point?" Face is so lopsided. How's your sickness? It's not too bad right now. Am I like the early the early like sore throat and sniffles phase? A little bit of cough? I'm just so mad, 'cause I'm like, "How did I just get off being sick and then I'm sick again?" Hi, Zami. How's it going? I'm like, "It's not fair." I'm like, "Do I need more vitamins? Why do I keep getting sick?" Surely I'm not that weak. Going good, sorry to hear you're feeling sick. I'm glad it's going good for you at least. I think I only have a cold, so hopefully hopefully it's not too bad. But I'm taking it easy. Me taking a really low-quality screenshot. Hello. How's it going? I hope no one gets confused by me putting "Be right back" right there. I am drawing a BRB screen, since I don't have one. I was about to say I forgot to draw eyebrows and they're clearly right there. Think I'm going crazy. I should learn how to draw backgrounds. I keep reusing this one cloud I drew, 'cause I don't know how to draw anything else. Drawing looks good so far, thank you. Doing my best. Going quicker than I thought. I guess since I went into it with an idea. Let me open my other art that I can match art style. Uh... This one. Let's see, what size? Now I'm just gonna put this on my second monitor, if I can stare at it. It's funny that I'm the only one I'm the only artist for Lunaria. But I can't seem to keep her consistent. Her hair always looks different. Hello. Thank you. How's it going? Think I made this too short. Going alright? Hmm... I feel like the middle looks a little short, but we'll leave it for now. Actually, yeah. Think the head. You like it? Thank you. Whenever I start to do line art, I start second-guessing myself. Never quite ends up the same as the sketch. Yay, Lunaria art. Hi, Egg. I feel like everyone's finding this stream today the one day I'm sick and it makes a terrible impression of me. I'm sick, I'm not dogging. I think this is too far. Making like a weird tangent line. I don't know how to fix it. I don't wanna redraw it. I'm just gonna redraw it. There's no fixing it. Hope you get well soon, thank you. I hope so too. It's just a cold, so it should pass in a couple days. I get better by the weekend, maybe I'll stream again to make up for it. Figured I would stream while I still sounded like okay. Figured I would stream while I still sounded like okay. I'm not too sick sounding yet, I don't think. Can hear it a bit in my voice, but it's not like fully, fully there yet. Or maybe I just sound a bit quieter than usual? If I ever redesign, I swear I'm gonna change my hair. I don't know why I struggle so much. It really shouldn't be this hard. But it looks nice on the model, so... It makes up for it. The music is so calming. I did my best to pick out the most calming music I could find. Because I think it fits my, my stream aesthetic. I keep meaning to look for more. Very short playlist I have right now. Music matches the doodle, you're so right. It's very calming. It's the tea or hot chocolate vibe. Hello, just joined, hi! How's it going? How are you doing? Yeah, I think, I think a couple, I think I have like five songs in this playlist. Like maybe ten, my next goal. I feel like they're chill enough that it's not annoying when they repeat. But I could use like a little more variety, right? Dang, you're good at drawing, thank you! I try my best. Do you have Insta? I do not. I'm not good at keeping up with Instagram. I tried using it in the past and then I never updated. My favorite artist, no you. This feels lopsided. It's 5:27 AM for you right now? It's so early. Or late? Early? Did you sleep? Hard waking up early. I know I've talked about it, or we talked about it before. And no sleep for you? No, sleep's important. I always try, I mean, I try to get eight hours of sleep. I don't usually get eight hours, but you know, I put in the effort. I think it's important. At least six. I think six is workable. This is not fluffy enough. Always the, or right side I struggle. Maybe if my stream is quiet enough, it will put people to sleep, make everyone sleep on time. Salutations! Hello, how's it going? I'm doing some quiet art. Good, not gonna lie, nice. I am a little quiet today. A little bit sick, but I'm chugging on. You're quite the artist, thank you. Trying my best. Hope you feel better, thank you again. Hoping it passes quickly. Doing my best to mute every time I have to cough. Have a nice cup of tea right beside me, just like in my drawing. More of a coffee person? I think most people I know are coffee people, but I'm a big, I'm a big tea person. I drink tea pretty much every day. A lot of my family and friends are big coffee people. Kind of tea do you got today? I have lemon ginger. I thought it'd be nice for my throat. Usually I have maybe a green tea, peppermint, Earl Grey, the basics. You love lemon? Nice. I love lemon tea. Can I just copy paste the "I"? Work smarter. Not harder, right? Why am I struggling? Your favorite salted caramel? Salted caramel sounds very nice. Anything sweet, I'm always a fan of. I know salt helps balance out the, the sweet a little bit. You're new here, so it's your first time on my channel? Welcome! I hope you enjoy your stay. Usually pretty chill here, I'd like to think. I do art most of the time. I play video games some of the time. There's a bunch of games coming out, so I'll probably play more games too. But I have a lot of art I need to finish first, so... A lot of drawing streams, hello! You love my art style? Thank you! Everyone's so nice today. Love art, so that's why you clicked on the stream? Nice. I'm also big. If it wasn't obvious from me drawing, big art enjoy. If I'm not streaming, I like watching art streams while I draw. Have you played Roblox before? Just once. I joined one of my friends on stream. I will shout her out, you can... Actually, can I just post a link? It's my own channel. I played it on my friend Yan's channel. Since this is my channel, I think I can post my own link. Played it just once, we played Dress to Impress. We were supposed to try other games, but we liked it so much that we didn't realize how much time had passed. But I told her if she ever, if she ever does another one, I'll join her for whatever game. Should try Dandies World? I don't think, I don't know anything about like any Roblox games. I will keep that in mind. Any suggestion is a welcome one. Mascot horror survival, okay. I'm not great with horror games, but perhaps? You don't really like Dandies World? Got some mixed opinions in here. Maybe I'll Google it super quick. Oh, I see. With the flower? Am I looking at the right thing? Your line art's very pretty, thank you! Feel like I've been doing so much line art recently on stream, that it's helped me quite a bit to improve my line weight, actually. I used to not care about line art too much. Now that I'm doing it so often, I feel like I'm just improving with process. Line art's so clean, thank you! One day I want to do a, a redrawing my old art stream, and I'll show off how, how bad my old line art is. Got any OCs? I do. I don't have anything on this PC that I can show, I don't think, but... I guess if you count my VTuber as an OC. I know my friends have been trying to get me to join them in Art Fight. Maybe if I do that next year, I'll show off some of my OCs. Maybe draw some other people's OCs on stream. Definitely join Art Fight, yeah? People keep telling me. I need to join Art Fight, but I've never done it. You're joining Art Fight too? Nice. Maybe next year for sure then. I'll dedicate a whole month to maybe drawing drawing streams and Art Fight. Assuming I'm allowed to stream people's OCs. You only got one OC? That's okay. One is still something. Having any OC is fun, I think. I have maybe like two main ones. But I have a bunch of like random ones I don't really do much with. Share if you want, feel free. I love hearing about people's OCs. His name is Maroon, nice. He's a little shadow in a cloak, and he's short. Sounds fun. Anything in a cloak? I'm like, yeah, I love a good cape, cape cloak moment. I just want to do circles. Trying to match this. For my starting soon art style. Here is a lantern wherever he goes. Okay, yeah, just circle. Even like this, I drew... Let me open it again. Drew this a couple months ago and I feel my line art's already a little bit more stable. Yellow glowing eyes, no mouth, and he's mute. Feel like I can picture him. A good description. Adorable. Sounds very cute. Little guy in a cloak. You drew him in Roblox spray paint. It's a fun drawing game? Drawing game sounds fun. Any drawing game, I would try. I'll fix the color on this after. You wish YouTube allowed you to post photos during streams? Feel like it's one of those things where it would be fun, but then I feel like someone out there would abuse it. You gotta keep it safe for everyone. Yeah. Always good people, and then there's people who get a little crazy, to say the least. Ear B, take care. Where did I... Oh, okay. Looking for the cape for the longest time. What happens when I draw in different layers? You're back, you gotta go to sleep. No problem, have a good night. Hope you sleep well. Don't stay up too late. It's good to sleep. I don't know what it is. Something about this. You're also back? Welcome back. Think the right side is too far out. What if I draw a maroon star fallen? And use... Kind of quick. Wee. I don't know what color that is. That's not maroon. But we're gonna take it. Fantasmical. I gotta lock in on this or I won't finish. The non-stop fixes. Always something. The more I look at it, the more I'm like, I need to clean up this and that. You're back again. Welcome back. Thought you were heading to sleep. I don't get how you have such a small channel, yet your art's amazing and everything is so detailed and decorated. Thank you. Okay. Still starting out. Here for the fun of it. I enjoy sharing my art with whoever happens to see it, big or small. You're gonna be successful one day, trust me. I'll trust you. Thank you. I'm pretty happy with how things have been going. I'm having fun streaming, editing, drawing. You're gonna try to animate someday? Good luck. I believe in you. I've done just a little bit of animation. Very fun. I'm just not... I don't know, I don't know what the word is. I don't have time. I thought about, maybe I'll animate this, but it's not quite drawn for it. Maybe the steam. Your grammar is terrible today? Or today is terrible? It's okay. Every day my grammar is quite bad. AFK, no worries. I think streams are the best place to AFK and just keep them in the background. I appreciate anyone who is just here chilling. You gotta go? No problem. Thanks for stopping by. Hope you have a good rest of your day or night. Had fun? Nice. Take care. Good luck with your art. Thank you. Hopefully I finish. It's teardrop season. Really hope that'll make you feel better soon. Hopefully, I will feel better soon. I'm feeling... I'd like to say I'm confident that this won't be a too bad of a or too long of a cold. Hmm. I wasn't gonna put details, but I don't think here needs detail. Whoops. I need my reference sheet. Forgot to open it for colors. Ta-da. Move it to my second monitor. Oh, I can close this now. Wanted to make sure it's same art style. Okay, I think, I think I can flat color now. Oh wait, the earrings. I'm silly. I knew I was gonna add them after, but... I should do it before I forget. Oh, and my... forgot everything today. I wanna nose. Passed out after work? Long day? How's it going, Sean? Birthday today? It's your birthday? Happy birthday. It's huge. I hope you had cake or something. We treat. Swore off sugar. But today along with select other occasions are an exception. Nice. Birthdays are worth it. I hope you enjoyed. Do I wanna do line art? For these? Do I wanna be lazy? The extra sleep's totally awesome. I think only one out of the fifteen years you have not worked on your birthday? Hopefully you have a good day at least, even if you're working. I know I don't really take off my birthday either. I mean, I could, but I don't. I'm not a super birthday person. But I still wish good birthdays upon everyone else. Okay, one side down. My convenient star brush that I made just cuz I can't. Drew one good star and then like, that's all I need. You're not either? Of course, the manager of the grocery store is saying happy birthday over the intercom. She said she had to since you're basically a celebrity running the only restaurant here. That's sweet, though. That's a nice sentiment. A solo restaurant. I wasn't gonna do the commission. I could. Actually have it ready. But I was gonna wait for you to pop in. Since I know you wanted to see it worked on. I can switch over once I finish these earrings. Otherwise, I'll, I'll never remember them. I can't draw stars. Your heart dropped when you saw you streaming for over an hour after you woke up? Yeah, don't worry. I waited since I I knew. Such a, such a bad looking star. Like, the one thing I should be good at drawing. Actually really cute, thank you. It looks very lopsided for me. But you know what? That makes it charming, maybe. That lopsided stars are adorable. True. I won't argue with that. It makes me feel better about drawing bad, lopsided stars. Let me save this. Gonna quickly throw on... Do I wanna throw on... Whoops, black colors. Actually... Still feeling off? Yeah. I don't know what it is. I keep getting sick. Season changes can be deadly. Yeah, I think I was not prepared for the the season change. Feel like it got really cold, really fast. You're in the double digits in the negative? That's, that's so cold. I don't even wanna think about negatives right now. Struggling with the... Well, we've hit negatives a couple times, I think. I think it threw me off coming back from Japan. It was so warm there, so hot. Straight into the cold. Japan is muggy from what you heard, extremely humid? Yeah, super humid. Very hot. I have a lot of like the, I brought fall clothes. Or like some fall clothes, just in case. Didn't end up needing it, like at all, basically. You're going some point as well? Gonna learn fully Ja- Japanese fully next year? Good luck. I know you said you're you know, pretty good Japanese already, I think. I would love to... Oh, I lost my pen tool for a second. I would love to like, learn more Japanese and go back. Hope you enjoy it when you go. Beautiful place. Super fun. Steam, I'll figure out later. Probably draw it separately. Just so I don't forget it. Throw it in here. Yoto, first destination, no doubt. Yoto's very nice. I definitely wanna go to Yoto next time. Okay, I think... I think that's all my flat colors. Love how it's going, thank you. Gold mug, perfect. Coffee, tea, or cocoa? I'm thinking tea. Potentially cocoa, if it is the season. But I pretty much always have tea. Big tea person. Having tea right now. Let's see. How long have I been going? Only an hour and a half? Feels like I've been going forever. Oh, I always forget my hair. You know what? I'll add it before I forget to. Knew it was gonna be tea, seem like a tea person, yeah. Big tea fan. Big matcha. Green tea. Earl Grey. Fruit. I'll drink pretty much anything. Okay, I'll remember. I'll remember the hair now that it's there. Matcha's bomb, even people that don't like tea? Yeah. Matcha's, like, super popular right now. Very... It's a lot more accessible now, too. Which is nice, easier to get my hands on matcha. Sometimes not nice, 'cause then I run out of... Or the store runs out of matcha and I get sad, but... It's nice to see people enjoying things I like. You don't know the English translation, but it's like rice water? I don't think I have had something like that. I would try it, though. I'm open to, like, anything. Drink-wise? Aqua de horchata. I've never tried... I've seen, now that you mention it, I've seen, like, videos, like TikToks. People making horchata. Horchada. But I've never, I've never tried it. Maybe next time I see a recipe... I should save it. So good. I'll remember it. I'll for sure see another video about it, hopefully. Or I'll just look it up. I forgot that's a thing I can do. I can look, I can look up my own recipes. It's funny how much my model breaks when I turn to drink tea. Should probably fix that, but I find it funny. Okay, I think... This, I will maybe come back to off-stream. I'm debating if I wanna... If I wanna animate this, I'll have to change a couple of things. Oops, keep dropping things I will think about. Like how it turned out so far, thank you. If I animate it, I'll have to... Draw a little bit extra. If I don't, I would finish coloring it today. Wanna have birthday snacks? Have you ever had a Brooklyn blueberry and assai chocolate? I have not. That sounds delicious. Hmm, it's addictive. Chocolates are definitely very addictive. I love anything, anything chocolate. Okay, in that case... I think I'll go for another half hour, but I'll work on the commission sketch. Probably reskinch it and then potentially finish it on another stream? See how fast I sketch. Ta-da. Gonna sketch over this, add all the additions that I need to, clean it up. Needs quite a bit of cleaning. I'll leave this. I don't know if I can spell. In case anyone pops in. Like the head. I have all my notes to my side. Feel free to annoy me, if anything. I am forgetful. I might have given you too many details, okay. I'll fit in whatever I can, whatever looks nice. If anything looks too much, then... We can always correct it. It's the magic of art. And always change things. Any good show or movie recommendations? I am not a movie or show person, funny enough. The only thing I've watched recently, I finally watched the K-pop Demon Hunter movie. I actually enjoyed it quite a bit. That's probably the, I know it came out a while ago, and that's the most recent thing I've seen. Watched it a couple weeks ago. But if anyone has suggestions, please, please share. The hand-scarred initials, yeah. Great Budapest Hotel. I don't think I've actually seen the movie. But I have heard people mention it. My left hand. Me trying to figure out my left from my right. There's a hand here. It's a must-watch, beautiful, so unique, and the cast is outstanding. High praise. I get the chance, I'll give it a watch. I have so many things I keep saying I need to watch, read. What does a bear's paw look like? I need a reference. I'll anime if I it as best I can. I just could not, I could not remember what a bear paw looked like. Then I'll be sure to have... Is the left? Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know my left and rights, I think. A cool scar. No, maybe I'll do it. A different color, so I don't forget. I made a note of it. Gotta keep it... Accurate. I would show you the little draw, it's just a hand that looks like this. I have a note written down. Very handy way of taking notes. I'm a visual, visual learner. Very handy. I see what you did there, yeah. Or I see what I did there. Or you see what, you know what, you know what I mean? You see, yeah, you know what, yeah, I'm tired. English is hard. English is my first and only language. And it's hard. Why do I not know how to draw hands, suddenly? Hehe. Hands are like the- Hands are like the bane of an artist's existence. Some peo-, I know some people really like drawing hands. And I do like drawing hands. I'm just not good at them. So I like to complain about it. You know what, maybe I'll do it in red. So then I remember that it should be, this should be in red too. So cool. When I color it, I'll make sure to make it look very cool. Too much if I put another one? A good look, fun on the cheek. Sorry about the picture, it's okay. I needed it for an art reference. It's okay. And then pandas. Have eye thingies. Hope you weren't too squeamish. I don't even know what I would rate myself. I'm like a little... I guess it depends on my mood. Some things bother me, some don't. It's probably why I don't like... Horror games. Sometimes I never know what they're gonna put in them. Some things scare me, some things don't. Did the hand bother you at all? Not really. I've seen like people's posts. Like healing stuff, so... Better than most? I, I, I feel like I'm not, I don't know. Maybe I'm just too, too hard on myself. Maybe it's because I've gotten quite a few injuries too. Ever play FNAF? Never. For all the times I've talked about it, I've never played. Never played it. I need to look up more references. Gotta get a stream where you play one? I'm like terrified of... Like gore is one thing. I'm like, horror? You start to lose me. I'm ver-, I'm like the craziest scaredy cat. Gotta read all the lore? I am fascinated by the lore. If I ever see random posts about it, I stop and read them, even though I never know what's going on half the time. Do you remember a short where Yan asked you if you played? Yeah, Yan likes it. She always tells me I should play it, but I'm too scared. I told her I'll watch her play it. I'm like, me playing FNAF will be me, like, sitting here. Not looking at the screen. And then crying. My weakness: drawing circles. Same thing when I have to draw a suitcase. No idea how to draw a circle. It's amazing how unbelievable the creator is. First game is so short and stupid, then you start investigating. It's the most insane storytelling a game can have. There's so many like, I see so many people talk about it, and like theories and lore. Characters. And I'm like fascinated. I'm fascinated by it, but I, I don't know if I'll ever play it still. Matpat pulling his ha-, hair out. All the game theories. I'm truly fascinated. Me racking my brain to understand perspective. Thousands of theories, tens of thousands of lore, pages of lore. Just the tip of the iceberg. Maybe one day... I'll read up about like the lore properly. I don't know, do I need to play? Maybe I'll watch someone play the game. I'm too weak. I'm not even gonna say I would do it for like a subscriber goal, on the off-chance I hit it, I'm like, I can't. That's too, that's too, that's too much of a chance of that happening. No matter how unlikely the goal is. Perspective, my nemesis. True iceberg video on FNAF would be all day long. I would love to watch a crazy deep dive into everything FNAF. See, even 10K, it sounds so far off, but on the chance that it happens, I'm like, I can't, I can't actually play FNAF. Can't play them much either, four scares the snot out of you. It's just the, the jump scares, man. I'm not good with games that have jump scares. Like, give me, give me a thriller that doesn't have... Any jumps in it. Even stuff that's like not that scary still gets me. Have I seen or know about four? Let me look it up. I don't know what any of the FNAF four. I don't think I would know any of them by number. Oh, it's the one that has like the, the nightmare ones. Those are terrifying. Animatronics in general, I'm like, terrifying. But jump scares in that, that's a disaster waiting to happen. Focuses on sounds which makes it scarier, yeah. Anything with crazy like sound. FNAF has like great sound design. Demonic and overly crazy nightmare fuel-induced animatronics, too much for me. From what you've seen or heard, what's your favorite character? I wanna say Bertie Fazbear. Or Foxy. Pirates are funny. You have to listen for breathing basically, so you listen close and you're forced to put up the volume? That's so scary. They really know how to, how to get you. Foxy's your favorite? Yeah. I really like the... Idea of just a pirate fox. That's all I know about him. Okay, I'm gonna redo this. Springtrap? William Afton? Springtrap looks freaky. I mean, they all look kinda, they're all kinda crazy looking. Maybe one day, maybe one Halloween. No, I'm not, I'm not gonna lie, I'm not playing FNAF. I need to do like those perspective exercises where you just draw boxes. I'm like, I'm... I have not drawn anything in perspective in a long time. First game Chica freaked you out? She's one of your favorite from the first? Chica's fun. I feel like they're all pretty charming. In their own ways. I'm learning. Following a tutorial. I'm not good at drawing mechanical... Things. And then perspective. And then wheel. People hated Bonnie because he killed you the most? Bonnie the bunny. I feel like I don't. I feel like a lot of people seem to love and hate the different animatronics. You like Baby a lot? Let me Google, which one's Baby? Ah, the doll. So many characters. Oops. Well, maybe one day. I won't play FNAF, but I'll, I will watch someone. I don't know if you know how much content there is. I know there's a bunch of games. And like the new ones, you like walk around and stuff? It's a VR game? Twenty-eight games? That was more than I thought. I knew it'd be double digits, but I didn't think it was twenty-eight. Fifty books. I have seen books. I did not realize there was that many though. A religion now feels like it. Definitely a little bit of a cult following. Definitely a little bit of a cult following. Starting to realize how complicated this actually is? Me too. I didn't realize how unskilled I am in terms of mechanical. Or in terms of FNAF also. I'm learning a lot today. FNAF is crazy. I'm crazy. Maybe they should have the same. We're all crazy under that logic? Just a little bit. I think everyone can be a little crazy in their own way. Favorite author? I don't think I've thought about it. I don't think of any book that I've read like recently. I feel like cause everything I've read recently is like webtoons. That's all I gravitate towards. But then I don't even know who the, who the authors are. Oh, my PC lagging a little bit. Raymond Chandler? What's your favorite book from Raymond Chandler? Very well, my lovely. You know what? I You know what? I think I lost. I should still have it somewhere. That one time, people were recommending me books to read. I wrote them down on a piece of paper and I I know it's somewhere. But I believe you might have recommended that. The sounds were earlier. I do wanna read, I, I've mentioned this every time that I wanna read more. And I did start reading a little bit. And re-reading, re- rereading some webtoons. And then I did start. I got a couple light novels for reading, but I, I haven't gotten far into them yet, so. Yeah, Classroom of the Elite. I do, I did check out the, the light novel. But I haven't, I've gotten as far as putting them on my phone. I was, I was gonna read them digitally. So I was like, okay, if I have my phone always on me, in theory, I'm gonna read even more. And then I never, I never read. Which is probably my fault. But it it definitely my fault, cause I, I don't use my phone that much anyway, so. I should just pick up. I don't think I can pick up a physical copy. Life never gives you enough time between sleep, it's true. Sleep, work, stream, go back to sleep, eat in between. And then repeat. I'm determined to improve my time management though. Don't forget procrastination, true. Me all day. In my defense, I am sick, but a lot of procrastinating today. Okay, we're, we're getting there. Looks amazing. Thank you. I hope so. I'll definitely need to, I think I'll definitely need to fix it up off-stream. Get some better references. But I, I didn't think I would be struggling this hard. But I hope you enjoyed watching it be sketched at least. I'm feeling good about the sketch. Yeah, simple on paper, more complicated when you do it. Feel like anything I start drawing, it always starts super simple in my head, and then once I actually start drawing it out, I realize a lot more to think about than expected. Okay. You know what? I will figure out the rest. Most likely off. Off-stream. Whoops. I do that all the time. Yeah. Good progress. I still doing some on-stream? Probably do the line line art off-stream and maybe come back to color. I'm gonna, I'm gonna want more references when I'm cleaning up the line art and having stream open, I realize I can't use my screen space the way I usually do with references. I would need like three screens. Sounds good. I will end it here then. I will maybe come back. I need to finish the, my other art too. I still have, let me throw this in here. Haven't finished this yet. I haven't even touched it. No time. Maybe this will be a stream. This one, depending if I animate it or not. If I animate it, it'll probably be off-stream, just cause it's so much more work. And on the commission, I will line art off-stream and probably maybe these two I can color at the same time, depending how much time I have. You love that one? I'm big, I really wanna finish it. I really like how it turned out so far. Hopefully next week or this week if I have time. Thank you guys for putting up with me while I'm sick. I hope I sounded okay enough. I know I didn't talk as much. But I tried my best to reply to everyone. But yeah, thanks for watching. Thanks for lurking. Hope everyone has a good day, night. And takes care. Don't get sick. Sound good to me? Nice. I was worried maybe the audio is a little rough, but I'm glad it sounds okay. Hope everyone takes care. Seasons are changing. Do your best. Stay hydrated, stay warm. Or cold if you live in Australia, I guess. Yeah. Bye everyone. Let me find my ending screen. Take care.